Sorry. It's time. Good evening. I call this special meeting of the Uba City Council to order here on May 25, 2021. Please note that this is a special meeting scheduled to review and discuss the city's proposed budget for fiscal year 2122. Public is welcome and encouraged to participate both in person and virtually. The governor has declared a state of emergency to existing California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued Executive Order N 33-20, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. How to participate in virtual meeting? The meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the question and answers functionality of the tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question and answers section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those who would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. Members of the public may address the City Council concerning any item that has been described in the notice of this meeting. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boongarten?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Espendola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
I know that this is a workshop, but I still think we'll take this opportunity to pledge allegiance to the flag. We have the undersheriff lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we get started with item number one, I'm going to take a little bit of liberty to announce that this afternoon, approximately 4:15, this is good news, by the way, that the Sutter County Supervisors also passed the Master Tax Exchange Agreement. So I want to go on record as again thanking them. The City Manager and I were able to present at the board meeting at the invite of Chairman Flores and County Administrative Officer Smith. This is a fairly significant development for the city of Uba City and the county of Sutter. Five-year process. You've heard me thank Diana, Ben, Dave, Dave Shaw, the Vice Mayor, myself, and the county. There's been a lot of work on this for five years, and we got it done. And I appreciate the council's support as we got it done and the vote of support as well as the supervisors. So we're off to good things. We look forward to LAFCO. I think that's going to be the next step when Newcombe Ranch starts its way through the process. That being said, the workshop tonight is also important as it is the workshop to present to all of us the proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022 operating budget and capital improvement program, or, excuse me, project budget. I want to go back and say that this has spent a lot of work for Spencer and Lynn and their team. Diana has had a piece of this at the beginning. Dave inherited some of it, or most of it. If it goes well, it's good. Just kidding. But this process for this council included the use of a Budget Ad Hoc Committee that was the Vice Mayor and myself, and we were supported by staff very well. There's a lot of work that's put into this presentation tonight that they led and that we learned from. They answered tough questions, as did the city staff. We tasked them with taking a look at things, and you've got to remember, this was all happening during COVID and not really knowing when, where, how, what the revenue was going to look like, nor what our expenditures. Also want to acknowledge the previous ad hoc committee of Councilmember Harris and the Vice Mayor, because they really got the ball started with this budget ad hoc work, and I'm sure that they'll have, or the Vice Mayor will have a comment, and I know all of the council will have a comment, about where we're at, where we've come, and where we think we're going to be going. But at this point, it looks like I am turning this over to Spencer Morrison, our Finance Director, Lynn Hale, our Accounting Manager, and it looks like Ms. Langley also, as the Public Works Director, is going to present to us tonight. So here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I am presenting you with the review of the fiscal year 2122 operating budget for the general fund and a summary of the enterprise funds. Joining me is, as you said, Lynn Hale, Accounting Manager, who's responsible for coordinating, stewarding, and assembling this budget document. At the end of the general fund section, I will outline some recommendations from the ad hoc committee and take your questions about the funds. After my presentation, I will turn the mic over to Diana Langley to review CIP and then utility rates. Who's, who can't hear? In the back?
I might need a different mic.
So the people in the back room aren't able to hear me? Is this better? I can hear me. You doing okay? Okay, very good. So I know the question's going to come up, and it's a great question. What about the American Rescue Plan Act, HR 1319 funds? The city will be receiving $15.6 million in two installments. Must be spent to offset or recover from pandemic setbacks and boost the local economy. These funds will be addressed separately from the budget for the most part. Ms. Langley will point out a couple of recommendations that we have already. But staff will be bringing recommendations soon to this council and into the public once we have a better chance to evaluate how we're able to use these to satisfy needs. And it's important to note that all funds must be spent by 12/31/24, so December 31st, these funds will need to be all spent. So that really limits the nature of the type of project or the commitments we make with these funds. So the budget process itself, you know, the departments identify needs to best serve the community and provide current year-end projections and communicate better budget needs in the coming year, providing guidance on the direction to implement council's direction on community priorities. Then Finance works mostly behind the scenes to provide information to the departments, City Manager, and City Council, gather projections and proposed budgets for every division, calculate, evaluate, and verify available funds, and assemble everything gathered into a usable document. The Budget Ad Hoc Committee takes a 30,000-foot look at the city's finances and practices and helps guide city staff's recommendations to the council from a policymaker's perspective. The City Manager is charged with implementing the council's vision and ensuring tax and ratepayer dollars support the community in the manner they were intended. I want to acknowledge, as we dive into the general fund here, that all of your city's department heads submitted reasonable and responsible budget requests and projections that fell in line with the city's current financial position. I expect everyone to take away that Uba City has weathered the COVID-19 pandemic as well as can be, by some luck, a community that supported local businesses during a tough time and taking a different approach than many other municipalities. Our city teams showed tenacity, compassion, and innovation to find ways to continue serving our community when it sometimes seemed impossible or improbable to do so. So as a recap, we are presenting a budget that essentially resets back to pre-COVID times. If you'll take yourselves back to this time last year, we were tasked with putting together a budget for you, and there was quite a bit of uncertainty. It was definitely the tone of May 2020. We did recommend to council, and council did pass, a deficit budget in 2021, knowing that we could always come back and make adjustments as need be. Then we started receiving early signs of strong sales tax revenues, and we ended 1920 with a surplus. Really came down to the fourth quarter, came down to actually the month of June 2020. And then we do continue to see sales tax and property tax strengthen, and now we have some optimism, cautiously optimistic, and that's, I think that's the new tone in this Cash flow is strong. One-time dollars can be applied to one-time needs specified in this latter section here. So these are, this is the cash flow surplus. This is the one-time surplus. So the sources would be money coming in and the surplus at the end of the year. So we're anticipating $2.5 million, adding to the $2.6 million from last year. So for one-time dollars that we can apply to one-time needs, we're looking at about $5.1 million. And then uses refers to the money going out. So we're recommending, staff's recommending, that we spend money on general fund CIP, about $1.9 million, that we do add to the pension stabilization, about $500,000, and then the remaining $782,000 are transfers and some other one-time items for about $3.2 We are anticipating a structural surplus as revenues have strengthened to pre-COVID levels, and then some are increasing expenditures recovered in this budget. So as you can see, that after we look at the revenue increase for the year, here? That's not easy. That we're looking at revenues of about $48.7 million, and with the expenditure increases of about $3.5 million, we're looking at expenditures of $48.5, almost $48.6 million, and a structural surplus of around $127,800. This is just a summary of operating surpluses and deficits. As you can see, as we were coming out of the recession, we had some years of deficit, but then we started building into surpluses. But it's really noteworthy that, and worth mentioning, that the surpluses from 2014 on had more to do with vacancies, vacancy savings in salaries and benefits than current year. And when we look at this, the $2.5 million that we're projecting for the end of the 2021 fiscal year, only about half of that comes from vacancies and material supplies and service savings. The rest of it is really in increases in revenue. But, you know, with these one-time dollars, when we talk about the vacancy savings, as recruitments are more and more successful, then that reduces the amount of these year-end savings that we have. So we really can't always count on them for ongoing expenditures. So we have to be very careful that we're identifying when monies are one-time versus So something quick on the reserves. So the city does have a healthy cities reserve, and that's 15% of the budget that we're adopting. And so we recalculate this 15% at the adoption of each budget for the following fiscal year. So 15% is a minimum, and if we need to ever use these reserves, council should expect a plan from staff to build them back up to proper levels. For these other funds that I list, vehicle replacement, pension stabilization, development impact fee loans, general fund CIP, council retains discretion to redirect and spend these general funds, no matter where they are. So I've listed these other balances in this slide. While council has discretion of these funds, these funds have a purpose that's already been directed to staff, and so there would definitely be an opportunity cost to be considered to be moved out. So vehicle replacement fund's an easy one. If we need vehicles and we repurpose money out of that fund, it's going to be more difficult to buy vehicles and so forth. Same with CIP. This slide shows where the general fund dollars go, and it makes it pretty evident that the priority for the general fund has been police, fire, and public works for a very long time. Of course, it's a little more than two-thirds of where the general fund dollars go, where they're spent. And these percentages only really change slightly from year to year, and it's what we'd expect since these areas continue to be the long-term priorities of the city. So this is a graphical slide of the changes to the general fund revenues over time. There are 10 years of actual historical results here. The fiscal year 21 is a projected number at $47.8 million, and the fiscal year 22 is proposed, of course. And while actual revenues are proposed at $48.7 million, the total does include anticipated transfers of $8.7 million. The largest revenue changes, Finance is projecting for fiscal year 22, show an increase in ongoing revenues of nearly $5.5 million. Sales tax is expected to increase over what was budgeted in fiscal '20. And then I've also added an additional slide to show a little more information on sales tax. Finance is also projecting a 4.3% increase in property tax next fiscal year. This growth estimate is supported by the city's property tax audit firm, HDL Companies, and trends in property values. This generates an additional $1 million in revenues over what was projected in fiscal year 21. We see a small decrease in franchise fees of $121,000. And that's just looking at current year-to-date numbers and projecting, but we do anticipate that rate increases from refuse, from recology, could likely make this a zero, just wash it completely. Building permit revenues were projected to increase by at least $200,000 next year, and we're signaling that we're definitely back open for business, and all the other items result in a reduction of about $19,000. On the sales tax revenues, this shows the most recent four quarters that we have any data for. You can see it definitely from the first quarter to the fourth quarter has picked up in 2020 over 2019, and that's really what this is showing. It's just showing the actual differences from year to year. And the average increase is about 5%, and we end up with a projection from HDL, from the sales tax consultant, right there, $15,682, but the finance, we projected about a 3% increase. So HDL projected a flat sales tax. I think they were being a little too conservative because I think they're seeing, using data from statewide auto sales, where our auto sales have been much more brisk here. I do want to note that I took a look at the first two payments of the first quarter of calendar year 2021, and those receipts were about 20% higher than the first two payments of the first quarter of 2020. I'm sorry, yeah, 2020. And so I'm expecting that briskness to continue for sales tax. I don't think we're seeing it drop anytime soon. We should be receiving the third payment of the quarter this week. On the expenditure fund side, or the general fund expenditure side, this does include actual results for 10 years, along with the fiscal year 2021 projected and 2022 proposed, and it's broken down into each year in categories by salary and benefit and MSNS, material supplies and services. So material supplies and services are the darker of that orangish color, and the salary and benefits is the lighter color. The largest expenditure changes come from, we did restore the 2.5% reductions council requested from departments in the 2021 budget, to the tune of about $1.2 million. Staff is recommending new positions based on council priorities, and this includes development services and fire to transition out of the safer grant. And then we also have other payroll changes that include step increases and benefit increases. And then we have reduced, we have, staff has reduced salary and benefits budgets by vacancies by 50%. And what this means is that we don't believe that we're going to fill every vacant position on July 1st, but rather we figure the average is going to be about December 31st, and so that's half the year. So we took half the vacancy budget out and applied it toward other increased expenditures and helped balance the budget that way. The Internal Service Fund changes, ISF, are almost entirely due to increases in property tax premium this year. The property tax industry has really taken a big hit with the national disasters of the last year, record hurricane season, and then, of course, all the fires, we can't forget, had a big impact as well. And then staff is recommending ongoing material supplies and services increase of about $486,000, and one-time material supplies and services increases of about $200,000. Yes?
I think, under ISF, you said property tax. I think you meant property insurance.
Yes, thank you for that correction. And for all of you listening at home, I may have completely lost my mind, but we're talking about property insurance. Our industry word for it is AIPIP, but it has gone up significantly. In fact, our deductible for, we got a notice that our deductible for vehicle coverage has gone from $5,000 per occurrence to $25,000 per occurrence, making us essentially totally self-insured for many of our vehicles. And so I'm evaluating alternatives now to help mitigate that. Pretty small. I can mostly read it from here, but these are the capital acquisition requests for vehicle maintenance and for vehicles, vehicle replacement. This is an excerpt right from the proposed budget. Some of the heavy, more expensive vehicles listed will be considered for lease financing, and will be part of the lease RFP in the coming months, request for proposal. There are 46 lighter duty vehicles, you know, standard pickups and sedans that have been flagged to be considered for leasing through Enterprise Fleet as well. This method is being analyzed by staff and will be brought forward to council at a future meeting. The Vehicle Maintenance Fund requires $52,500 from the general fund for this lift up here. Oops. There we go. There's a heavy lift that we use in our vehicle maintenance shop, and it's slated for replacement at about $69,000, and $52,500 of that is going to come from the general fund.
Through the mayor. I think one of the important things to kind of recognize is, most of our fellow cities have turned to leasing in order to make sure that they're able to keep current with safety items as well as vehicles. And when you think of fire and other areas where the equipment and apparatuses are very expensive, this will allow us to sort of, not sort of, it will reduce our outward cost as it relates to replacement fund and put it more into leasing and keep our equipment on a frontline-running basis. And so as we look towards that, and Spencer and the team do that, I think we have a great opportunity to provide better equipment for the services we provide. Appreciate that clarification. I think it's probably a good time to talk a little bit about the vehicle replacement fund to the rest of the council, because that was one of the tasks that the Vice Mayor and I were going to try to get into, and it quickly became evident that it was a much bigger issue than even we thought. And so I applaud the efforts of forward-looking to look at other alternatives to present to us in regards to making sure that the folks that are working for us are equipped with the right equipment and safe equipment. So you're not going to see, you're going to see some marginal increases in the vehicle replacement fund, but a wholesale redo, which is sorely needed and has been for a long time, isn't going to be a part of this budget. We'll be talking about that in future meetings.
The, these are, this is capital acquisition requests, and I realize as we put these slides together, and it always makes sense in our offices, but I realize that almost all the capital acquisitions that I'm showing on these slides are not part of the general fund, so you'll have to pardon me for that. But we do have some equipment requests as well from the wastewater lab. Capital acquisition requests from the Technology Replacement Fund are on this slide. The Technology Replacement Fund operates as an ISF, wherein departments pay a charge for use of the item. Those funds are accumulated in the fund in order to have funds available to replace technology items when they're worn out or out of warranty. The items included in this list have, all have funds available in the plan, in the Technology Replacement Fund, for the replacement except for police handheld radios, which is the last line, $42,800, and a network router for, which is a police department tool called Kletz, and it will require a small cash infusion as well, about $2,000. So the radios, oops, the radios are here, $42,800, and then as included in the material supplies and services is $2,000 for the router.
Spencer?
Yes?
Will you be talking a little bit about the topic of security concerns for our technology systems at all? If not, maybe we'll take a moment to do that.
Okay.
Just as a heads up again to the council, especially in light of some of the things that are going on in the world today. We have continued concern, and not that we are open to any threats, but we need to make sure that we are as tight with security as possible, because you have seen things happen in other jurisdictions to water treatment plants and sewer treatment plants and gasoline pipelines and all kinds of different things with ransomware, et cetera. So one of the topics that we discussed in the Budget Ad Hoc Committee, or was presented to us, was that there is an ongoing and probably growing need for us to take a good, hard look at whether or not our software systems are as secure as they possibly can be, because they could absolutely interrupt the business of the city. So I do know that that's going to be an item that comes to us in the future. We did address some of it in the budget, but just realize that this is, it's been thankfully brought to council, to the ad hoc committee anyway, and now to the council's attention, that this is one of those things that's hanging out there that we really need to address.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was wondering, when we're in the budget, we would be hopefully addressing some of those issues. So thanks for bringing that up.
Each year, information technology does have recommendations to shore up our security. It's not something that we have backburnered. Now, we did slow that down last year when we did the 2.5% cuts, but we've restored that, and I don't feel comfortable getting into the details of how we shore up our cyber, you know, cybersecurity and what we're doing on an annual basis, but we are taking, being very proactive annually as well. So I look forward to briefing council at a future date. No budget discussion should be without looking at pension expenses. This represents the cost of per's retirement as a percent of every payroll dollar. Safety is in the red, miscellaneous is in blue. This is a blended composite rate of all the tiers, including the UAL or unfunded actuarial liability payments. This is the, only the employer. only the employer portion. It does not include the portion paid by our employees. These projected rates are based on the actual reports as of June 30, 2019, which are the most recent CalPERS actuarial reports. And it's put out by CalPERS in August of 2020. So we'll get new reports this coming August. Finance will update this information when new actuarial reports are received. The assumption changes CalPERS has made in the past few years, which are increasing our UAL contributions, have been more alarming, but it's still, it's still increasing based on their contributions or based on their assumptions. We thought we were near the peak of the impacts of those changes for the miscellaneous plan, but we must anticipate the next one. So you can see that the miscellaneous in blue is kind of leveled out, leveling out a little bit in cost. It's still going to go up. We just happen to be in a, in a spot right now where it's flat. But what we're, what I'm anticipating is that CalPERS is monitoring cities, and as cities pull out of CalPERS and start to, or pull out of, sorry, the pandemic and are starting to feel more optimistic, I feel like we're going to start hearing more about reducing the actuarial investment return assumptions from seven to something lower than seven. If you look back at their historical returns, their, if you go back 10 years or 15 years, it's settling in closer to six than seven. If you go back 30 years, it's much higher, but that was, those were different times back in, you know, 30 years ago. So I think it's coming. It's something we need to brace for and prepare for, for sure. This is a little bit of a historical look at our projections. So as, back in 2019, we were looking at, or I should say 2016 actuarials. It was the, I believe that's a blue line, barely see it from here, so I'm sorry for that. But it is, we were looking at a little bit higher payments coming to fiscal year '24, '25. But we've taken some steps to reduce that. And also, as time goes on, CalPERS, when they do their estimates for us, they inflate our salaries and benefits higher than we actually grow in salaries and benefits. And so that makes, that makes the CalPERS estimates to look a little bit more severe than they might otherwise be. And so as you can see, we have hit a period, or we're about to hit a period, '23, '24, where it starts to flatten out just a little bit before continuing to rise. And there's several things happening there. I mean, we have, we have made a couple of payments against the UAL, which helps our costs. We do prepay our annual UAL requirement, that's the unfunded actuarial liability. We do prepay that every year, which saves us a year's worth of interest as well. And then we have, you know, each year we have more and more Peppera employees, which are at a lesser rate. They cost the city less than classic employees, which were hired before 2013. So there's quite a few things happening here, but I think, long story short, is the, these rates will increase over time and maybe even steeper, much steeper than this. So the ad hoc committee, as the mayor said, had gone through the budget, the budget process with staff and had some recommendations. We did reallocate pooled professional development, where it was, it was brought into the city. All of the travel and training, which we later called professional development, was brought into the city manager's office as a budget savings tool during the recession. And so that ad hoc committee is recommending to the council at large that we put that money, those, the proportionate money back into the budgets and give them director's control of their travel and training once again. Setting the travel budgets for the city manager and city council at a reasonable level that's, that's fair and doesn't, doesn't appear to be out of balance with what all the departments and divisions are receiving. Restoring Fly the Mission budget for one year, creating an equipment replacement fund, restore the downtown stroll contribution, clean up the use of professional services accounts, which means that as they reviewed, as they reviewed, they used a fresh set of eyes and really gave us a good point of view that the professional services accounts had items in them that might best be in maintenance or laundry in some cases. And so, and so it was a great, it was a great note for staff. And so we were able to re, kind of reseat those funds where they belong and to the tune of about $118,000 in the budget. So that was a great, a great tool. And it's important for us as managers and for you as the public to be able to look at accounts and know, understand what you're looking at and that it's pure. And then we also were requested to use internal service charges more consistently where if general service, the general services division isn't paying for pest control for some divisions, but not others, or some facilities, not others, is one example there. And so we've taken note of that as well.
Hold on for a second. Want to make sure we bring this back to the council to, if you have any questions about our recommendations, why they, we made them, any clarification you would like the vice mayor and I to give you on any of those, we'd be more than happy to do so.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I do have a question about the creating an equipment replacement fund. Is that including the leasing option that you're talking about?
So I think our thoughts on this in cohort with the budget group is that there are some big items besides vehicles that we have ongoing needs to purchase. And I would say things like self-contained breathing apparatuses. Help me with some of the other ones. But these are, these are known items that are large items that it may be in our best interest as a city to carve some money out periodically so that when those big purchases are needed to be made, the money exists for those. So it works a lot like our vehicle replacement fund, where we're putting a portion of money away each annually to fund those. And it's not just self-contained breathing apparatus. There's a host of different pieces of equipment. But that was the thought process on that.
Thank you. I could elaborate just a little bit. So just, I'll turn my, turn my mic this way so I can face. Turnout gears, another one for the fire. You know, the SCBA is one thing, but turnout gears, turnout gear, the structure uniforms that our firefighters wear for protection, they end up being, just for the pants and jacket, end up being about $1,200 a set. And so that's something that we know is going to wear out, and we know that that expense is coming. And so we want to be sure that we're, if we're, when we're able, set money, set funds aside to plan for that purchase instead of, instead of get to that moment and wonder, you know, where the funds are going to come from.
Spencer, I just want to clarify, chief just about passed out in his chair. That is a little bit more than $1,200 a set. So he's, I think you're talking more around $3,000 a set. So I just, I want to make sure that we don't have to have stop the bleed or some sort of resuscitation occurring in the audience.
I must have been referring to the sleeveless.
And that was the shorts and tank top version.
Summer, the summer version. Okay, chief. Thank you. And police has, police has a similar list of items that they foresee, they know, they know the expenditures are coming. And so we're going to plan for them, council willing.
Other questions?
Yep.
Yes?
First of all, I think that's a great idea. They help plan for the future and very innovative. And I thank you for that idea. Was there a threshold cost-wise before an item, in order for an item of equipment to get on that list or apply for the replacement fund? Have we established that?
We have not.
Okay.
We just know that there are these big ticket items. We did, we do anticipate, as you just heard, yeah, $3,000 a set with 50 some odd firefighters. You know, those kinds of things are going to be there, but we had not established a limit.
Still, still new. I was just curious.
The challenge with, I thought about how can I present this to you, like on an annual basis? Or, but these, all the equipment has, has different life cycles. And so the 35, we're looking about 35 turnouts, as I read chief's number a little more carefully, 35 turnouts about every five years. And then there may be some radios, 26 radios every 10 to 12 years. And so it's kind of hard to line it up, but just looking, 100, 260, 130,000, 34,000, you know, there's, these are big, these are big ticket items. Not, they don't meet the capital asset threshold. You know, a single radio isn't a capital asset. But when we're buying, you know, 26 radios, we're talking about $130,000 total.
So we'd be looking at something more along the lines of, you know, the difference between rolling stock, which is our equipment, and non-rolling stock items so that we can prepare and plan and forecast those type of expenses so that we have a placeholder for them.
Another quick question. Since some of these things are replaced every four or five years, are we setting the money aside at the current price? Or are we anticipating a price increase and set the money aside? Really? Or do we know yet?
I think the recommendation would be much like, unfortunately, the vehicle replacement fund isn't necessarily always falling, which is an adjustment annually based upon replacement cost. And so that, that funding of that would be dependent upon, you know, what's going on with those particular items and their cost.
Councilman Harris, you had some really good comments on that that I wanted to add. I guess the clarity of if we, if we have such large ticket items, is there a thought of a beginning budget to set aside for that fund?
Everything's about the ability to pay, right? So right now, you know, what we've, what we've asked is to work with, or have the staff work on, on what those items are, and then they'll need to come back to us with, with funding requests.
So with the vehicle replacement fund, which we've had a lot of discussion about that and how to tie up some of those things that weren't always clear to us as a council, I think this is a great idea. It's needed. I think it would be great to also have clarity of how we determine those annual set-asides and how departments access that fund. And if it's not a capital asset, if it's not a, you know, capital improvement project, how do we determine that it's not a capital improvement? What makes it be an equipment replacement fund item? The description to it.
I think you can define what the current, current asset threshold is, right?
In general, we do have a fixed asset policy that defines that. But in general, we're looking at items that are over $5,000 in, in service costs. So not just the purchase, but to put, it costs $5,000 to put it into service. So if there's sales tax, shipping, bolt-on, add-on items that we need to put into service, then in that, if that's more than $5,000 and there's a useful life of more than two years, that's, that's the simple, the simplified version of how we determine if it's a capital asset or not. But we could definitely point that out when we bring it. I think that's, I think that's what you're asking.
Right.
Can you, can we just label it and maybe just clarify why it carries the label, equipment, and not capital acquisition?
Exactly, exactly.
Easy for us to do.
Thank you, thank you.
Nothing else. I do want to make a couple of comments on this, and I'm sure the vice mayor will want to as well. On the reallocated pool, pool professional development, I think I understand the reason why that was all centralized at one point. But the discussion with the ad hoc committee for your consideration is simply putting the control of those training budgets and the training dollars back to our department heads. They're professional. They know what their folks need. They know how to request that information or the funding. And it just seemed almost cumbersome and bureaucratic that it all had to funnel up through, through one spot. And this releases the departments to control their training. The travel budgets for city manager and city council, there was, I think all of us know there's, they're pulling money from all kinds of different places. Basically, the request was, give us, like we require of the departments, here's the budget for travel for council, here's the budget for travel and professional development for city managers so that it's, it's very transparent and people can look at it and you don't have to go to multiple different places to find out what was spent. The professional services, and then I'll let the vice mayor handle the other ones. The professional services, that was, that was an interesting, and again, Pinimation is the name of the software. I guess it's still Pinimation, but it was, you know, it hasn't changed much. And so in professional services, it was a nightmare to go back in there and say, okay, well, they're doing all kinds of different things and they're calling it professional services. So we asked and, and staff performed well. I said, look, if it's, and Spencer mentioned it, if it's laundry, then it should go into a laundry account. It shouldn't be in professional services. So there was just, I think, a lot of confusion, and rightfully so, over time, as people funneled funding requests into things that could certainly qualify as professional services, but might more appropriately fall into line items that were already, already created. And in some cases, I think we asked you to create a few line items as well. But this, again, I would hope facilitates not only for the department heads, but facilitates for someone who wants to look at, you know, how their tax money is being spent, how they can go in and say, okay, what are they, what are they paying? Is this for that? Versus, you know, having to look in four or five different areas for the funding stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, first of all, Spencer and Lynn, thank you. This hasn't been a 12-month process. This has been a couple of years. And I go back to Councilman Harris, when you were mayor, you know, putting the ad hoc committee together, starting that process, we were the committee the first year, and we knew that this was going to be multiple years. So thank you for your patience because I can tell you now that this council probably understands our budget better than councils in the past decade because we've been into this, trying to figure it out. The mayor's already hit on several things, you know, the professional development, you know, get that out so they can do their training, you know, their training. And then with us, you know, we need to be accountable as well. That was something that was brought up as we discussed, that we need to be held to the same standards as a council, as the departments are when they're doing their training. Is it justified? Is it needed? Is it warranted? And we don't need to have a budget for the council that is disproportionate to another department that, say, has 50 people in it. We need to be reasonable with what we have. Fly the Mission, it was important to the culture of this organization. We asked for it to be put on pause a year ago, COVID, everything, just slow it down. But to the point of how things were disjointed, the first year we sat down and looked at Fly the Mission, we could not come up with the true cost. If you remember, Councilman Harris, it's like, how much did it really cost? Some came out of here, some came out of here, some came over here. And that started this process of really diving into the budget. Let's get the equipment replacement fund much better than the vehicle replacement fund. I know we'll get there, but we know that we're going to get there. The stroll contributions, and we alluded to this when we had the charitable donations at the last meeting. Things that are ongoing that have community benefit that we sponsor with, we don't really recommend those being in the competition for the charitable giving that we do to the rest of the community. Now, this doesn't mean that the DBA is going to always get their money, but this means they're important enough because it is a community activity that everyone in the community benefits from. You don't have to buy a ticket to go to the stroll. You just show up. We're a partner with them. So we need to give it its own line item because we have a history of doing this, and we know the expense and the request is coming. And then we have the discretionary dollars to where we can sew that into things like the Arts Council and to the Bill Liaison and to other organizations that come to us, the Sutter County Library, stuff like that. And, but the DBA still needs to come to us every year. It's not automatic. I want to make sure that you, we're clear on that because it wasn't just, we're going to do it and write them a check. It still needs to be justified. It still needs to be a community event, and we still have full discretion over that every year. I'm going to skip the next one because I want to wrap up with it. We go to internal service charges consistently. You've already hit on it. We did find those inconsistencies over the course of the two years. The big one was the professional services account. And before I make my comments, I want to say And before I make my comments, I want to say, Spencer, Lynn, Robin, when she was here, you guys did your jobs and did them well. To our department heads, you guys did your jobs and did exactly what you were told to do and how to do it. Not a fault there. But being in the accounting industry, I'm just going to kind of tell you what it was. It was a catch-all. It was, we shoved this here, we shoved that there, signed a, you know, you just, I mean, we found car washes in there, we found all kinds of things, just because a professional service did this, so there's where it goes. What we also uncovered is, in my personal opinion, was abuse of, of where we should be sending, spending our money as a city. And we did uncover that. As you remember, we went through those and we found dues paid, we found different things that was going on, that was just kind of buried, and it was all through the prior city manager's budget, not the current, prior. And the best part about this is we've recommended to clean all of this up, get all of these proper allocations pushed out to the departments into more accurate account headings, so it's not that cloud over us. One of the things that, when I ran, was, there was all these questions about the budget, because we'd pull it up, and you look at it, why are we paying staff X number of dollars, but then we're outsourcing everything? And at the end of the day, we found out it's because professional services was just kind of a catch-all. We found maintenance contracts and everything else in there. So the best part about this is by cleaning it up and doing the recommendation, it's going to be bringing more clarity to our financials, to the general public. They're not going to be looking at these numbers that seem to be contradicting each other. It's going to bring up the integrity of you and your team. And it's going to, I feel very strongly, reaffirm that we, as a council, are doing our fiduciary responsibility in overseeing the finances that we're entrusted with as the policymakers for this city. So, you know, that's why you have some of these things there, and that's why it also took so long, is because as we dove down, we started finding things that my gut said was there, but after two years, we just found them, we just kept whittling away at it. And the best part is, is those days are behind us, and I'm looking forward to, to where we're going. But thank you, Councilmember Harris, for starting that process. And so we're much more well-informed, and thank you, Spencer and Lynn.
Through the mayor. I'm glad that you added, and Vice Mayor added, some of those additional comments, that's very helpful to understand, because I was, it was not clear to me with restored the stroll contribution aspect, why we call that out specifically as a big point of recommendation when we have these funds of, you know, as you identified them as charity, that we have those funds, and, and that gives every community aspect of service nonprofit to come to us and solicit. So I was not clear of how, why that was such a big call-out compared to all the other work, but that's helpful to understand. I guess my question is really centered around the internal services and the consistency. I was trying to write my question so it'd help understand a little bit here. So is the confusion of these inappropriate accounting based on human error, or is it the shortfall of our current accounting software system? Or is it a mixture of the two? You know, so I was trying to, listening to both of your comments and having input from the staff, you know, pre this meeting and currently, so I'm, I'm, I just, for fairness, for those that are outside listening in, is it our current software system that is so outdated?
I would say that, I mean, first, first, I want to, I want to only, only lightly use the word inappropriate, because that has a certain accounting connotation that's uncomfortable.
Yeah, I want to make sure that.
Really, it's really, it was around consistency.
Oh, okay.
And so, and so different users were coding, you know, different contracts, you know, differently. And so it wasn't, it wasn't consistent. So they were all being charged to, to maintenance accounts, the proper maintenance account, for instance, I use the example of pest control.
Okay.
But, but it wasn't always consistently charged to, you know, finances portion to finance. You know, maybe, maybe finance City Hall was being charged through another division, 1541, which is our general services building maintenance division.
Okay.
Right? And so, and so where other buildings, you know, maybe the police station was being charged directly. And so that's, that was just an inconsistently, inconsistency that the ad hoc committee picked up on, well, how come this facility's being charged and this facility's not? There, I mean, they're, they're both being, invoices are both getting paid and being coded correctly, but one's being coded in the, the building maintenance division, 1541, and one's being coded in police or pick, pick the facility.
Right. But it was just the consistency of the same duty and within the appropriate budget items that it needed to be in, that was discovered in the, in this whole process. So I, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for whoever else is listening to this besides us in the room. So the, I do like the, the, the travel budgets, read how you assign the travel budgets. And the professional development, best decision made. The department leaders know what is needed within their departments to strengthen the quality of our employees who work for the city to provide the services. I think it's very well done.
Thank you all for your comments. So I do have some other recommendations for the general fund that I will be bringing forward on the adoption, the adoption. And of course, anything that comes from this meeting, I will add to this list, but these are, these are ones that I've already sent my first draft of the resolution off into the staff report world here at City Hall. And so, but I still have a chance to make some edits, so it's not, definitely not too late. But I do, I do want to recommend repaying the $500,000, $500,000 that we withdrew from the pension stabilization fund in 1920 to cover general fund pension costs, when we thought that we might have trouble, you know, we might have trouble paying all the bills out of the general fund. And so with the pandemic raging at that point, and so we did want to, I do want to recommend putting the monies back, because we didn't end up really needing to use them in the end. Things turned out okay in 1920. And we also, we made the budget recommendation for 2021, but will not be making a withdrawal. So we wanted, we wanted to take the money from, from 1920 and put it back up into the pension stabilization fund, where it can increase our assets compared to our liability of unfunded liability. Okay? Another is, I, I do recommend making an additional discretionary payment to CalPERS of $500,000. While we do have the money in the pension stabilization fund invested, it's all fully invested and it's earning interest for us, it's not earning 7%, which is what the interest rate is on our unfunded liability. So I do recommend making periodic payments to our unfunded, to CalPERS for unfunded actuarial liability, when it makes sense to do so. We already discussed enterprise lease, fleet leasing of light vehicles. I do not think this is actually part of the, the resolution, but I do want, it is a recommendation, so I wanted to mention it, along with lease financing of heavy vehicles. And I just wanted to let you know that this is ongoing, this won't be resolved, neither, none of the last three of these items will be resolved for the, for the fiscal year, for the budget. But I am going to also be evaluating property insurance options and coming back to the council with recommendations as well. Before I go to enterprise funds, are there any other questions? These are, this is going to be quick. No? So again, I'm going to go through some, some budget charts, just a few charts, and then there'll be a much lengthier Public Works Utility Rates discussion by Diana Langley later. So the water revenues, expenses, and debt coverage on this slide is, is as illustrated. I do want to note that we used a staff recommended, staff recommended revenues as placeholders until the utility rates are discussed. This slide shows a dip in revenue and then an increase from rate increases, before a slight decline this year and next, while all expenses continue to increase steadily. So the, the proposed total revenue is forecast to decline 0.8% compared to the expense increase of 7.8%. Increasing expenses are contributing to the declining debt coverage ratio, though we are projecting the ratio remain above the 1.2 that's required in the bond debt covenants. We will be at about 2.06. And that's what this, this line, this blue line is illustrating here. So you can see, even though we are, we are anticipating revenue increases, just the increase in expenditures is a little bit more than, than the debt, you know, it's bringing the debt coverage down. So this slide has available water cash reserves, which are also declining, and it'll be almost entirely programmed by the fiscal year '21, '22 capital improvement budget, which is the darker, the purple color, leaving a $3.8 million balance. Net revenues are forecast to drop by over 3.4%, which will put more pressure on debt coverage. You'll see details of the CIP for water in the next presentation. On the wastewater side, like the water fund, this is the '21, '22 wastewater revenue budget showing increasing, this one's showing increasing revenues, yet declining debt service ratio. Increasing revenues are not quite keeping up with the expenses that also continue to increase steadily. And like water, increasing expenses are contributing to declining debt coverage ratio, though we are projecting the ratio to remain above 1.2 that is required in the bond debt covenants at 1.73, which is about right here. You can see the 1.2 is the little blue line, so we're still above the, the required amount. And just like water, a staff recommended revenue increase has also been built into this budget. And this slide does show, just like the water, shows the wastewater CIP, cash reserves and net revenues. Shows a very large spike in CIP for the wastewater plant improvements. You'll remember the bond issue of 2018 and increasing cash due to bond proceeds. That's the 1920 spike that you see there. The cash reserves are declining as well, as they are programmed for projects and bond debt, bond debt. You will see details of CIP again for wastewater in the next presentation. That is what I have for you tonight.
All right. I know we're going to get into some other stuff. I do want to go back, and this would probably be in regards to some concerns I have in regards to revenues. So this would bring back to the general fund. And this is the reason why I have those concerns, is that I do, I do think that we are certainly continue to be in an ag-based economy. And with that, there are several things that are going on within that economy that I think could directly impact the city, one of which is water woes. Not, not just what we deliver to our constituents, but the fact that there are people who aren't going to be growing things, the costs, the input costs to grow those things are increasing, and the availability of those products are, are scarce as well. So as it relates, I'm hopeful that HDL will continue to monitor that. I know that in the past, we had, had maybe taken a little bit different approach to what they were saying things were going to happen, because we saw some robust things going on within our community. Right now, I'm wondering what's going on. For instance, we talked about car, auto, auto dealers. They can't get cars to sell. Tractor dealers, of which are near dear to me, we can't get tractors to sell. So those are going to have a direct impact on sales tax revenue. And so my ask is, is, you know, just keep prompting HDL to take that into consideration when they look at the Yuba City economy, or at least of the region. I do think, and this is not a political statement, you know, this could be short-term inflation, this could be long-term inflation, but the, the buying power of, of our constituents' dollar is being affected right now. All you have to do is go to the gas pump, all you have to do is go buy some wood, you know, these are simple things. Are these long-term things, short-term things? I don't know. There's a lot of people on both sides of that can talk about that, but once again, as the dollars turn through the economy, if you're paying $100 for a sheet of plywood that used to cost you half of that, you know, things are going to be impacted by that. So I, I'm cautiously optimistic on the revenue side, that what's, what we're projecting is there, but I'm also appropriately concerned that what we're seeing, or what we see today, isn't necessarily what's going to translate down the road. That being said, I think that, I think that, you know, the fact that you have provided for council consideration, you know, the, the budget that you have is good, we're balanced. But like I said, it just, it, it, it concerns me on a go-forward basis, exactly what's happening with, with some of these inputs that I talked about. That's my comments.
Through the mayor. First of all, thank you both again, because it's a tremendous amount of work you guys have done. I want to go back for clarification on one thing, and then I'm going to pick up right where the mayor left off. But when I was talking about earlier about the inappropriate accounts and stuff, I wasn't referring to these guys. I just want to make sure, you guys and the departments all did what you wanted, or what you, not what you wanted, you did what you wanted to do. You did what you were asked to do, and everything was, was spot-on. And the discrepancies were located in a specific budget three years ago, where everything was centralized through the city manager's office. So you guys, spot-on, I want to make sure I'm on the record, you guys rock, you guys did your job, all's good. But back to where the mayor was talking about, being cautiously optimistic. Yeah, tractors aren't selling, cars aren't selling, water's not there, sales tax numbers, HDL's missed it, because they look at statewide, and we had that discussion going through COVID and went, no, we got to watch this, we're looking for key other things. Are we going to be prepared to where if, if we fill the, the sales tax revenue numbers to where are we going to be monitoring it close enough to where we may have to come back, not that we want to, and be look at, we may have to have, you know, 2% or 1% cut in materials and supplies, you know? I don't want to go there, but seeing what we're seeing, you've got to look long-term. You know, are, are we going to be nimble enough to be able to bring back and say, look, this is where we're heading, if you see a, a dip in the revenues? Because we're really building on a budget that is, is trying to account for every dollar, you know, where we've had all these huge surpluses in years prior, we've got $100,000 left over. So it's not going to take but one month of sales tax to tip that cart one way or the other. So I just want to make sure that we're going to have some kind of safeguard there to where, you know, autos aren't coming in, tractors aren't coming in, you know? This will resolve itself somewhere, but what's going to be our safeguards? How often are we going to be revisiting this? What is, what is your thoughts?
So whether or not we can be nimble, I think staff proved in 1920 that we were able to be pretty nimble.
1920? Your young years.
In fiscal year.
He uses that pretty quickly, so he seems like 1920.
19, 2020. Yeah, I think we're, I think staff showed that they could be very nimble and, and, and turn off the, the spending as, as appropriate, as needed. And so there, there are, just, just as we have budget tools to help fund general fund spending, we have budget tools to save in the general fund as well. And so I do believe that, that your, your executive team has their finger on the pulse of that pretty well and, and can do what's necessary. So as far as watching, yes, I watch sales tax. Unfortunately, you know, it's, it's quarterly, it comes in quarterly, and it's lagging. But, but I do watch, and I, I watch the news and I listen to, you know, people that I'm around, are they buying stuff? Are they buying, you know, there's, it's not only new cars, used cars are hard to come by these days, but when people are buying, they're paying a big premium for it. There's, there's a few, a few pickups on the lot, and you look at it, and it's like, well, do I, do I really want a $73,000 F-150? Well, maybe you do. And so, I mean, they- And so, I mean, they are still making sales. So, that was one of our considerations, and it was tough. So, I do plan on continuing to watch and listen, and, you know, my city council are some of my ears out in the community. I've got city council members who are very in tune with the business community, and we talk. And so, you know, I'll be watching for flags that you're raising, and when you're concerned, you're saying, hey, none of my associates are buying right now, none of them. How's that going to affect Uba City? So, I think that it's uncomfortable passing a ongoing spending, because I can't say for 25 years, for eight years, for five years, that we're always going to have the money for this. But, I think that we have enough unmet needs, and we have the ability today that as long as we stay nimble and we stay informed, that I think we can make the right decisions and keep the city healthy.
And one final comment on that. Spencer, thank you. I have no doubt that you're going to be on top of it yourself and Lynn and your entire team. I wanted the public to experience and hear what we have seen sitting in the budget ad hoc committees, and that is, you're not going into this blind, you are nimble, we can adjust if need be, and I'm comfortable with what we brought forward. I use it cautiously optimistic, wouldn't be, you know, wouldn't, you know, we would have spoke up in the ad hoc if we weren't, but I wanted people to get to know you a little bit better, to know that you're not asleep at the wheel, that you're on it, so thank you.
Pleasure.
I have an ask of the city manager. On the subject of the recent priorities workshop, maybe just a few comments about the intertwining of the priorities with the budget as we move forward with the discussion. I don't, we don't need to go into the deep dark details, but perhaps an explanation of the five priorities, I believe it ended up being five, and how, you know, this budget is going to complement, or at least facilitate, dealing with some of those priorities and the things that will make those come to fruition.
Sure. These priorities align with past priorities, this budget will align with those, things like public safety and public works and quality of life. And those items, as you know, Wednesday, we were, the executive team is tasked to go back and put some meat around some subjects and bring back some items for council to consider. And in alignment with that, the team is also going to be bringing back our recommendations for how HR 1319, or ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. We have done a lot of work on that. Our team is very excited about forcing those into rankings and preparing those for council review and consideration. So, I'm very comfortable that this budget aligns with the priorities that we heard on an overarching basis, and we will be bringing back details to that in the near future.
Thank you for that. I think it's important to note that we really do appreciate, and all of you are in the room with the exception of one, your input into those priorities. It's, you know, you're the professionals, you're where the rubber meets the road. Hopefully, what we are able to hear from you, we're able to facilitate so that you can get it done. But, again, it would be more a reflection of quality rather than just quantity, you know? Those key things underneath those priorities that we can actually tackle and then celebrate getting them done in the '21-'22 budgets. So, thank you to the city manager, thank you to each, every one of you and the staff who are working on that. We're looking very much forward to seeing what that work looks like.
Through the mayor, I just, your points of ag and sales tax are important discussion items. I also have had the ability to sit down with Spencer and Lynn, listen closely to their guidance and how they prepare, and do some very, very deep research and understanding. And I think the two slides that, they kind of bring some comfort and some optimism, because in my time as a councilperson, this is the first time we have a surplus. So, I just want to identify that. Slide number five, you know, you covered about the deficits and the surpluses, and those questions that you brought up are listed in there. And the chain of supplies is impacting multiple, multiple, multiple industries. And so, the concern about inflation is a good one to always keep in mind as we move forward. Those signs may surface in the cells, that may be an indicator when you come to those quarterly, even though it's usually about, what, three, maybe six months, depending on the cycle, time back, right? So, there's, but we have enough data to kind of keep us focused on that direction. The second slide that I think is interesting to give us much more, the word security, maybe, let's just go to slide 10, which is reserves and funds. We have, our healthy city funds are extremely in good, a good place that we haven't been previously. And on top of that, there's about 24 million that we have access for discretionary to kind of, the term that I hear so often right now is to pivot, you know? How do we pivot in the direction that we need to go to? So, I share those pieces of information as a reminder that our finance team has really, really moved, positioned our city and with our new city manager, and the work that initiated with council member Harrison, moved into with our vice mayor, mayor. This is a good place to be in a city at this point. If we had any option and choice to select from, I certainly would rather be selecting where we're at right now as a city financially than we were even a year ago in discussions that may not be publicly available, but this is a much better place to be than we were a year ago.
Any other council comments?
Just real briefly, if you may, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I want to thank both of you, and also both of you, and of course, the input from the E-team. This, what we see today and what we have in our email and up here is a representation of a lot of hours and a lot of work and a lot of retooling and rethinking, some recommendations on your behalf and the behalf of you two gentlemen, thinking outside the box, getting creative, all for the intended purpose of making the city the most transparent, responsible, and efficient as possible. And yes, it is a good place to be, to have a surplus. It's odd to see that up there. And I think the rule of the day is, what's already been said, is cautiously optimistic. We're happy to be here, but boy, tread lightly, and I think that goes along with a place where I think most of us come from financially is conservative and being careful. And, but it's good, and we were able to make some good things, equipment and help out our employees, a lot of things in here. And I won't belabor the point, but thank you all very much, and it's comforting knowing you all are doing the good work that you've been doing. So, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Going back to your point about your concern, you know, regarding water issues and the drought right now, and those are well-founded, but it wasn't that long ago in '15 that this state was in its worst drought ever, and this area, this state, this region figured out a way to work. And so, we have recent history to look at what those numbers may look like in an ag community. We went from being out of water to almost underwater within just a few months. So, we do have recent history to look at, and to your point with unable to get tractors and cars, that's everybody. I mean, we're all in the same boat, because those items come from the same places, so... But, yeah, so...
All right. At this point, and before Ms. Langley speaks, I'm going to go ahead and give a shot for the public comment. If there's anybody in the audience would like to make a comment, please step to the podium or borrow Spencer's mic.
Through the mayor, as you're anticipating public comment, I do want to take an opportunity, and I, maybe I wasn't listening as closely since I've heard Spencer and Lynn's presentation now multiple times. This budget contemplates six new firefighters and moves the city off of a safer grant approach, which is what we've been using for staffing for the last four or five years. And so, I'm very proud of the fact that we're moving away from safer grant and into, you know, into full-time funding for our firefighters. And as I was share, as shared with me and the team, there's obligations, wants, and needs, and this is an obligation, and I just want to point that out because this is the first time that I'm aware of in a long time that we're able to sort of head in that direction and provide Chief Alexander and his team that level of stability to move forward.
Excellent point, and it did escape the presentation, so you were spot-on to bring it up to our attention. Thank you. Anybody online, Sarah, for public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. We'll turn this over to Ms. Langley.
I will do CIP first. Good evening, mayor and council. And so, the, uh-oh. That's okay. So, I'll improvise in between. So, my presentation tonight, you know, this is the CIP. It's a lot of pages, double-sided, and so, in the presentation, I highlighted the projects that are actually, there's funds being placed into the budget accounts this fiscal year. There's a lot of projects that have carryover money. I'm not going to go into those, as those have been covered in previous capital improvement programs. The other thing that I would like to note as well, is that you bring up a really good point related to increase in costs and availability of materials. We're seeing within the construction industry huge increases in material costs, and then also inability to obtain materials to the point that, you know, contractors are having a hard time getting pipe, getting concrete, getting aggregate, and that's going to carry across into our capital projects, and so, that's something that we're really going to have to be aware of as we are bidding projects over the summer into the fall, with my biggest concern being Bridge Street widening, as that is a heavy equipment, heavy material project that will be reliant upon contractors who are extremely busy right now. And then, as additional stimulus funds come forward for construction with agencies competing for the same resources, that's going to escalate costs. So, with that, I'll get into the presentation. So, for general projects, we have property abatement, which provides funding for citywide abatement efforts. General, I can't say general, general plan implementation and future update, $500,000. This provides funds to implement Uba City's general plan, housing element, sphere of influence expansion, annexation processes, and supporting studies including specific master plan implementation and a community visioning process. Development Services is going through the process right now of updating the housing element. Public Works is updating the travel demand model so we can update the transportation element. So, we're doing bits and pieces at a time, but at some point in time, Development Services is going to need to come forward to do the all-inclusive update, as well as the AB-1600 study. And then, citywide Acela technology funding. This is to upgrade software to include a planning module through our Acela software program and customized programming for city-specific needs. Facilities projects, we have city hall improvements. That includes painting of the exterior buildings and then major upgrades in the council chambers. And then, improvements to buildings and grounds, we need to replace the controller for the Corporation Yard elevator, and then this is also the catch-all for other facility Community facilities projects, here's some projects that were either under construction or constructed during fiscal year 2021. So, we have Featherford Parkway Phase 2, Sand Brandon Park Playground Equipment, and then the Happy Park slide. And going into '21-'22, you can see there's a long list of proposed projects for community services. Just to highlight a few, we've talked about the Harder Parkway Park and Bike Connection. Some that we haven't really talked about too much is the Blackburn Tally Field Bedding replacement. This would be the third and final phase. Also proposing $100,000 for well installations, and that's, there's still some parks that do not have wells for irrigation, and so, some of this would be utilized for Greenwood Park, Shanghai Garden, Kingwood, and City Hall. Also Blackburn Tally scoreboard replacement. This would replace scoreboards on all three fields, which are currently 39 years old. And then, for the senior cylinder building repairs, there's dry rot and water intrusion issues, and then they need to install security fencing around the solar system components. I should note that that project's being funded through CDPG-CV money. Public safety projects, at Fire Station 3, we had brick veneer on the exterior of the building that would just fall off, and so, we removed that brick veneer and replaced it with stucco. We also have new flooring at Fire Station 2, roof repair at Fire Station Number 1, which is desperately needed. Replaced the workstations at Dispatch at the Police Department, and then added additional evidence storage at the Police Department with the loft. Public safety projects for this next fiscal year include fire station renovation and repair. Again, this is a kind of a catch-all account to address repairs and renovations at the fire stations and fire admin. Police Department evidence storage, this is a first year of accumulation of three years. This first year would, is proposed to be funded through the HR 1319 money. This would provide a building on the, in the new parking lot expansion area to provide overflow for evidence storage or the bulkier items. Fire Station Number 4 training grounds, this is to plan and develop a training facility adjacent to Fire Station Number 4. And then firefighter storage of PPE, this is funded through the CDPG-CV money, and it would be to purchase a shed-type facility for the firefighters to place their personal protective equipment, so it's outside of their living quarters. For streets projects, we had, of course, the completion of the Fifth Street Bridge, and even though we had the ribbon cutting months ago, Kevin just submitted the final payment request, and so, you know, these projects, even though the construction's done, the closeout still takes a long time afterward, so happy for Kevin that he's soon completely done with that project. And then, the Franklin Avenue Improvements Project. So, for this next fiscal year, projects that are, include funding are drainage improvements. We're requesting $400,000, which is higher than we typically request in annual basis, and that's because we have Jones Road, storm drain seems to either have collapsed or has significant issues, and that's between Carolina and Lincoln, and so, we're, we may need to replace that. We have the Bridge Street widening project between Gray and Cooper. A half of that's funded through a state local partnership program grant, and then the rest will be funded through development impact fees and road funds. Residential road rehab, which typically funds our slurry seals, the ADA public sidewalk improvements, which typically is funded through, good portion through CDPG. The road maintenance and rehab account, there's $614,000 being added in this fiscal year, but I want to note the current balance of about $3 million. And then, Sutter Bike Path Gap closure, which includes the bike path extension from Hooper to the Harder Parkway Park, and then also a shared path on the west side of Harder between Butte House and Highway 20. So, we submit the CIP early on in the calendar year, late February, early March. So, since that time, we have some additional projects that aren't in the CIP, but they are projects slated for public works, and that includes the Walton Avenue Complete Streets Improvements Project, in which we received a $3.75 million grant from SECOG, and we're proposing to use $850,000 of the road rehab money to fund that project. We expect design in 2021 and then construction in 2022, and that installs sidewalks on the west side of Walton Avenue between Lincoln and Franklin, paving dirt shoulders, performing various pavement repairs for Walton Avenue between Hazel and Sam's Club, upgrading traffic signals, and trying to add a left-turn pocket at Cherry for the northbound direction and possibly traffic signal. We also received four highway safety improvement program project grants. We also received four highway safety improvement program project grants. A lot of them are to improve signal hardware at 38 signalized intersections if you, the new, with new black plates. Also, if you drive around California on the state highways, you'll notice that a lot of Caltrans signals have been, they have put the fluorescent tape around the edges. We would be doing that to our signals as well. Crosstalk improvements at 15 unsignalized intersections, and then also a sign audit. Going into water, some projects, right, so harder tank recoating. A lot of people have never seen the inside of one of those storage tanks, so this is what it looks like. We are nearing completion of that project so we can get, the first tank's completed, the second tank we will be bringing back online so we can have it operational for the summer. The other thing, and this, this project actually received one of our innovation awards this year. This is catwalks over the sedimentation basins at the water treatment plant, which is right, those catwalks, which makes it much easier for staff to be able to access the said basins. So for this next fiscal year, we're adding $1.5 million for a second groundwater well. We do have a Bureau of Reclamation grant of $750,000 to put towards that second groundwater well. As we go into extremely dry years, the second groundwater well will be very helpful to us, and eventually we'd like to convert it to an aquifer storage recovery well so that we can maximize our water rates and draw water year-round to store for usage during the summer. We're also adding $500,000 to our water treatment plant electrical and instrumentation improvements. That plant is over 50 years old. There are elements that are still 50 years old, original, and so we need to update the motor controls and update the electrical and instrumentation. We have the recurring water treatment plant and water storage improvements project. This is kind of a catch-all, but this year we're proposing to replace the actuators at the said basins, headgate replacement, and then there's some concrete leaks that we need to repair. The Berry School Water Transmission Line, this has been on the books for a while. It's a project to get a water service to Berry School, and it's funded through a drinking water state revolving fund grant through the State Water Resources Control Board. The city is the lead because we are the water provider. We, the state is telling us that we are going to have an agreement by the end of this fiscal year to move forward with, so that we can actually move forward with the construction of this project. This is one, this is one that's been frustrating from the sense that we've been working on it for at least two to three years now, and it's been in limbo at the state waiting for that funding agreement. But last word is that that was becoming very shortly.
Do you mind if I ask a question about that one?
Sure.
Just like, again, on the cost, you know, a three-year-old project probably costs X dollars, a three, a now project for the same thing's probably X plus. Is that, are we covered to continue that, or is that part of the grant? Does it have an escalator in it so that they're, they're funding it? Because it was revenue neutral to the city at one point, right?
Yeah, the city has zero contributions to that project. What would typically happen is that, you know, we have the grant agreements for a certain amount. We will bid the project and see how the bids come in, and then we would determine how to go from there, whether or not they amend the agreement to cover the full costs, or if they decide that there's a different project that makes more sense, then we get reimbursement for what we've completed to date. So there'll be points to review our next steps with that project. And then one final project that's not listed on here is, this last year, you contributed $800,000 to replacing the membrane filters on Cell One. We're adding $800,000 to this budget to replace the membrane filters in Cell Two. Moving on to wastewater, the wastewater treatment facility improvements project, you could tell from Spencer's presentation in terms of our CIP costs, this was a huge project for the city to do some major upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant, including electrical instrumentation. We replaced the old belt press with new screw presses to remove the liquids. And then this is, some people might think this is a UFO. This is actually a cover over our digester. And so we've, we've been very excited to see that project come online in different phases. Projects for this fiscal year, I've talked a lot about the wastewater treatment facility outfall and diffuser project. Thank you to council, because at the, the last meeting, you approved moving forward with the design of the project, and we've already had the kickoff, and then also had a value engineering meeting as well. So we are steaming full board on that project. Don't let the budget amount fool you on this. This project at the 30% design level is estimated at 35 million. Now, that includes a hefty 50% contingency, but at the 30% level, you would include that level of contingency because there's so much unknowns with this project. The capitalization fund is typically where we fund projects for the collection system this year. One of the projects that's, that's a priority for me is that our main trunk line into the wastewater treatment facility is constructed of Tekite. It's a Tekite pipe, and so it's fiberglass. And so with fiberglass, it degrades over time. And what we found with other fiberglass pipes, much smaller diameter, this is like 42 inches, much smaller diameter, is once you expose them to the air, they tend to disintegrate. And so that's a project. It's the major trunk line into the wastewater treatment facility. Don't worry, we TV it all the time to make sure that it's in good condition, but before something happens, we want to line that pipe to provide structural integrity. So we have built up some funds in this capitalization fund, and we will be doing Phase One of the project, which would basically be from Lincoln and Garden all the way down to the wastewater treatment facility. And then Phase Two would be funded at a later date, which would go from Lincoln and Garden all the way up to Lift Station One on Del Monte. Smaller diameter pipe, though. And then we have two neighborhoods in which we are having significant issues with backlot sewer lines, and so we need to address those neighborhoods. In some situations, it'll be installing new sewer lines in the streets, and others, it'll be doing repairs on the existing backlot lines. And then a project I haven't spent a lot of time talking about is the Harder Bridge Sewer Trunk Connection. This, if you look at Harder Parkway by River Valley High School, there's currently a 24-inch sewer line that stubs at the south end of Harder Parkway. And then on Harding Road at Bridge Street, there's a 24-inch sewer line that is on Harding Road. So we would like to connect those two dots. And so what that does is the existing sewer line on Lassen Avenue is undersized for the volume of wastewater. And so at certain times, it surcharges, which backs up wastewater into the collection system, which is not something that you generally want to have happen. And then, so this would help to address, alleviate the flows on that Lassen line. And then also, this would provide the opportunities for development on the west side of Harding, north of Franklin. You have all of those orchards, and we have had inquiries related to projects within that area, and the sewer trunk line would help to serve that area. And so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions related to CIP, or we also have directors here that could answer questions specific to their projects.
Thank you, Diana. Counsel?
Through the mayor?
Please.
Wow, that was a lot. That was a lot. Thank you. I'll start with Walton and Aaron Dear. You mentioned 3.7. Is it all going to go towards Walton between Lincoln and Franklin?
So, so install sidewalks on the west side of Walton between Lincoln and Franklin, and then the, the other improvements will basically go all the way from Hazel up to Sam's Club. So the pavement repairs, the, you know, the striping, paving dirt shoulders, upgrading traffic signals. So it's a really long stretch of Walton. If you, as you know, as you drive Walton every day, there's a lot of sections that the asphalt is failing, and so we need to grind those out, replace those, widen the shoulders, and then we really want to fill in the gaps of the sidewalk on the west side.
So on the west side, you're talking about a continuous sidewalk from Lincoln to Franklin?
Yes.
Okay, so what about the properties that are north? You're smiling.
Yeah, I know which one you're talking about.
North of Bakay, and you've got, you've got two properties there. You've got the city's property, and of course, you've got the Moose Lodge.
Right.
What's that going to look like?
So typically, what we do is we'll approach property owners and say, are you interested in dedicating right-of-way to the city? And in exchange, the city will construct the improvements. Sometimes you get property owners that say, we find value in that, yes, we'll dedicate the right-of-way. Other times, you find property owners that say, we're not really interested in that, you know, please proceed. In that situation, the way we've currently laid it out is the improvements are within the existing right-of-way. And so we're not proposing to widen Walton to provide additional travel lanes. This is truly to improve pedestrian safety, bicycle access, and improve the quality of the roadway. If we were going to truly widen Walton Avenue, we would need to pursue additional right-of-way, in which case, if that's the direction that council would want to go, it's a different discussion with the property owners in that it's, are you interested in selling right-of-way to the city? And sometimes those discussions go well, sometimes they don't go well. At that point, if they don't go well, then council has to make a decision if you want to exercise eminent domain, which is never a popular option. And we try really hard to come up with, you know, solutions that work for all parties. I would say right now, with as expensive as land prices are, that would be something that we'd really want to get appraisals and look into if that was something that council wanted to pursue to acquire that additional right-of-way if we did not have voluntary property owners.
So that leads into my next question. You mentioned the property on, I forget which side it was, on Cherry. Did you say it was the north or the south during your presentation, the property owner, on the corner of Cherry and Walton?
So I didn't say anything specific to the, that we might do a traffic signal at Cherry and Walton. If we do a traffic signal, we will need to coordinate to get right-of-way at those two properties.
Both those properties?
Yeah.
Okay.
To have the signal poles in the ultimate location where they should be. If we, you know, you could always put them in a location that's not the ultimate, and then you pay a lot more when you have to relocate.
And lastly, it seems to me over the, over the years, Walton has become a second 99, and I don't think it was designed for that, obviously. Are you talking about just a resurfacing? Are you going to go down and regrade it for maybe more traffic or heavier traffic? What's, what's that look like?
So that's one of the things that we evaluate, is that what is the existing structural section? Where do you have the failure of the structural section? And then if it's due to heavy traffic, such as trucks, then we would grind out where the trucks travel and put a thicker structural section within that area so it can withstand that loading.
That, that will be to, to be determined.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
No, no, no.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager.
I just want to note, we did it at the last public hearing, but if we do not give Ms. Langley and her team her due based on the level of grants that they were able to bring into the city over the last, for a long time, but specifically over the last six months in order to help forward these projects that are so critical to the city, I would be remiss in my duties and, and just want to point that out.
Duly noted. As always, you're bringing in the money, and that's good. Appreciate it, and your staff. And I'm sure Kevin is happy if the bridge is finally done.
Yeah, I'm sure Kevin is watching right now.
Okay.
And, you know, Kevin and the engineering staff are fantastic about pursuing grant opportunities. Our grant consultant is fantastic about bringing opportunities to us. And, you know, we also have great relationships with SECOG, and thank you to the representatives to the various agencies, frac mid that we get grants from, because that helps us as well.
Well done.
Yeah, Diana, the house, the first house, approximately 100 feet from the corner on the southeast corner, that first house is like 12 inches from the road. Is that going to be removed, or is it still going to be there? Because right now, it's like one lane, and it goes into the turn pocket, and that house is like a foot away, the pavement's a foot away from the house on the widening of that project.
So are you referring to the east side of Walton, south of Franklin?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Most likely not. When we did the widening project on the west side of Walton right there, and we tried to coordinate with the property owner at that time, there was zero interest in working with the city to, to address that. Not to say that we would not try again, but as of right now, that's not included in the project.
Okay, because I've gone by there several times, and that house is just waiting to get hit. I mean, especially if we widen that road to there, so. Okay, I was just wondering if that was in the plans. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the action items were to conduct a workshop on the operating capital improvement project budgets, discussion and direction to staff. That's item A. Any further discussion on that? Let me back up. Sarah, you got the look like there's somebody online.
No public comment.
Perfect, thank you. All right. Between you and Shannon, you guys keep me in line. So any discussion or any direction to staff on the proposed fiscal year 2122 operating and the capital improvement project budgets? Okay, sounds good. Item B was, is proposed 2021, 2022 water and wastewater rates information only. So here we go.
Here we go. So the purpose of rates, to ensure adequate revenues in the water and wastewater enterprise funds to cover operation and maintenance, debt service, and then capital projects. So in April of 2016, council adopted the water and wastewater rate study, and it proposed adjustments to the city's water and wastewater rates over the next five years through fiscal year 2021, so this current fiscal year. In June of 2016, council adopted water and wastewater ordinances that provide for council review rates on an annual basis as part of the fiscal year budget review process, which is tonight, prior to July 1st implementation of the increases for each year. And it also gave council the authority to set rates by resolution. So this is an important point. So even though the water and wastewater rate study's only contemplated through fiscal year 2021, since council adopted rates less than those approved through the Proposition 218 process, there is still the ability to increase rates beyond fiscal year 2021, provided that the rates do not exceed those approved through the Proposition 218 process. So that, that five-year term of the study does not limit us because council adopted rates less than the Proposition 218 rates, so there's still capacity to increase rates. So with that said, here is, we completed our water master plan in about 2019, and through that, we did a full assessment of the water treatment plant, the distribution system, and came up with a list of improvements and associated capital costs. And so this, this table is broken down by facilities, say of supply improvements, low lift pump station, which is our intake, water treatment plant, booster pump station tanks, which are the large tanks within the distribution system and pipelines, and then the capital cost in millions broken out by timeframe. So one to five years, six to 10 years, 11 to 15 years, and 16 to 20 years. And so with that, within the first one to five years, you can see they're recommending $12.1 million in water treatment plant improvements, $9.3 million in booster pump station tank improvements, $15 million in pipelines. And you can see the pipeline amount carries across, and then you have varying amounts the other years. So when you look at, you know, this total, sticker shock. But I think it's important because what it notes is that, you know, we have deferred a lot of maintenance to the system over the last few years, actually, the last many years. And so this is, this is catching up to us, and staff recognizes that this is, you know, kind of pie in the sky in terms of what we would, we wish we could do if we had unlimited funds, but realistically, that is not the case. However, with that said, we do recognize the need to increase rates. And so what I have before you is proposed rate increases over the next three years that get us just to about the approved Prop 218 rates. So here you have the meter size, the baseline usage that's allowed for each of these rates. So the way our water bills are set up is you have a baseline allocation, and then once you exceed that baseline allocation, you pay an additional charge for flow rate in excess of that baseline allocation. Our current rate, the recommending a 5% increase for fiscal year 2122, a 5% increase for fiscal year 2223, and a 5% increase for fiscal year 2324. And with that, we're still below the Prop 218 amount. And with that, we're still below the Prop 218 amount. So for instance, for a one-inch water service, which is the normal size for a single-family dwelling, we're still about a dollar below the Prop 218 amount. So any questions before I move on from this slide? Okay. So what does that mean in terms of estimated fiscal impact? So this table shows our projected revenues. And I have to say, this is based upon a model. And so we have a consultant that this is what they do, is they create water and wastewater models for agencies. And so they take our financials, they put that in, and create spreadsheets that you input what you want your rate increase to be, and it pops out what the revenues are going to be. And then you can also see your expenses. And so with these projected 5% increases each year, fiscal year 21, 22, we would have revenues of about 16.8 million. And with those increases, we would end up at about 18.7 million. With that, we're also showing operating expenses increasing. And these increases are based upon increases in like your power costs, your chemical costs, staffing, things like that, and then our existing debt service. And so over the years, we have, you know, we have loans that we've taken out. And so we have debt payments that we have to pay for those loans. And so our total expenses are shown here. So when you subtract the expenses from the revenues, you can see that we would go from about $4.5 million of net revenues to about $5.6 million of net revenues. That's what you have, would have available for reserves and available for projects. And as Spencer noted in his presentation, our bond covenants require that we maintain a debt coverage ratio of 1.2. And so you can see that we would be in excess of that. Now, going back a slide, when you look at these numbers, 4.5, 5 million, 5.63, over the next three years, that doesn't get us anywhere close to that 36.4. But as I said, you know, we are, we are realistic in understanding where we're at and that these rate increases do impact our customers. And so we want to be cognizant of that. So historical and proposed water rates, if this goes all the way back to October 2006. So there was a period of time, 2007 through 2010, where there were no rate increases as we didn't have a rate study in effect. In 2011, council adopted a rate study which had progressive increases. And then also during that timeframe, however, if you recall that the drought occurred starting in about 2013, and then continued on, and we saw significant impacts to our revenues during that timeframe. In 2016, we brought forward a new rate study. And then council has adopted increases through July, July 1 of 2018 was the last approved rate increase. And then you can see that it stayed flat. And so these next three years, staff is recommending 5% increases each year. So we always get the question, well, how do our rates compare to other agencies? And so this slide shows, these are all other agencies. So for instance, Live Oak is down here. Here's Yuba City's current rate. And this is based upon a single-family residence with a one-inch meter and average baseline allocation usage of 15 HCF. OPUD is here. Here's Yuba City at fiscal year 21, 22. Yuba City at fiscal year 22, 23, and Yuba City at fiscal year 23, 24. So you can see, even with the proposed increases over the next three years, from a water perspective, we are still significantly below all of these other agencies, which tops out, Rockland is at 114.92. So any questions before I switch over to wastewater?
I do, if you went three slides back, I think it was your, that one. Yep. You mentioned that that was forecasted through a model. Does the model happen to take into consideration, you know, what might happen if there is a continued water shortage? Or is this just assuming status quo as we would know it today?
It assumes status quo. So it takes a snapshot in time of water usage for the, for a particular year and projects that forward. And so the year that they used, I believe, was the full year of 2019. And so this would be based upon water usage in 2019. So it does not take into account reductions if, you know, customers conserve water. I will say, and I've noted this in a previous presentation, that after the 2013 through 2017 drought, our customers never recovered to back to their full water usage. There was still a significant reduction in water usage. You know, right now, with the current situation, even though they're projecting this to be the second worst drought since, the worst drought since 1977, '78, as of right now, the regional water authority is recommending that agencies adopt a 10% voluntary reduction measure. And there's a lot of different ways to achieve that. But this does not take into account any reduction in that water usage. And, you know, one of the things that is fortunate for Yuba City to some extent is this baseline HCF. Is that, you know, if you are an average water user during nine months out of the year, you're going to fall within that baseline HCF. And it's really the summer months that you're going to exceed that. And so our fixed revenues are pretty steady compared to the variable. Whereas other agencies have a much higher variable rate because they either don't have a baseline allocation or it's a much smaller baseline allocation. So that is fortunate for us. But if, if customers do reduce water, it does impact us.
Thank you. Any other questions before we get to wastewater? Okay, next. Thank you.
All right, so similar to water, we just completed the wastewater master plan. And we have recommended improvements, similar format. So we have the facility here, so we have pipelines, lift stations. We saw our treatment facility improvements. And then you see this, the big outfall diffuser and pipeline, which is the big chunk within the next five years. And then capital costs broken into a timeframe of one to five years, six to 10 years, and 11 to 20 years. Again, pipelines, large portion, lift stations, large portion of the costs. And then the wastewater treatment facility improvements. As much as we recently put into the wastewater treatment facility, there's still a lot of improvements to do at that facility. Both water and wastewater, I just want to note, with pipelines. You know, we have pipelines that are 100 years old that go back to the 1920s. When the water distribution system, we have three-inch galvanized lines that serve the old downtown area, which is the area that the original water district was formed for. And so those pipelines are still there today. And they, you know, at some point, they are going to give up. And we don't want to be in a situation where we're in emergency having to replace them. We want to be able to plan ahead. Similarly, with wastewater, we have a lot of old infrastructure. And right now, we're going through the process of analyzing. We have miles and miles and miles of concrete pipe. And concrete does not do well with hydrogen sulfide gases, which is produced with wastewater. I'm probably getting way too technical right now. But that hydrogen sulfide eats away at the cement in the concrete to where you get aggregate exposed. It eats at the walls of the pipe, and so over time, they fail. And so that's something that we need to address because you get to a point, once the concrete pipe fails, you do not have a lot of options. So trying to get to those sooner so that we can line those rather than have to replace those. So similarly with water, with wastewater, this table shows the sewer rate schedule based upon classifications. Sewers, wastewater is different, and that residential just pays a flat fee. It's not based upon water usage. However, non-residential pays based upon water usage. So they pay a flat fee plus a volumetric charge. So for fiscal year 21, 22, we're proposing an 8% increase, 22, 23, an 8% increase, and then 23, 24, a 5.6% increase. And really, that gets you to the Prop 218 amount for all intensive purposes. This table shows the residential, commercial, and then impact to schools. So, you know, for a single-family home, they're currently paying $52.96. At the end of, you know, this third increase, they'd be paying $65.23. And I have a slide in a little bit that compares the increase in costs. Wastewater is also different in that we have our industrial users. So Sun Suite, Valley Fine Foods, and Cogan Plants, they pay based upon volume of wastewater, total suspended solids, and BOD. And then we also have septic haulers that pay a cost per gallon and then a flat fee for, for minimum amount. I will say the septic haulers, this has been a huge issue that's going to have to be addressed, is that our septic hauling rates are high. And so it actually pays for septic haulers to go to drive, you know, outside of the area, to go to other locations that will accept their discharge. And so that's something that the septic haulers have asked us to evaluate to see if there's a way to make our fees more in line with what other agencies charge. I'm not proposing to do that as part of this process tonight or within the next month, but that is something to keep on the radar. So the estimated fiscal impact is, you have the anticipated revenues under the rates. Anticipated, so under the current rates, anticipated revenues with the, I should have changed this to wastewater rate increase. So the anticipated revenues with the wastewater rate increases, the operating expenses, and then the existing debt service. So you can see wastewater is in a different situation, and Spencer's graph showed that as well. If, once you subtract the expenses from the revenues in fiscal year 21, 22, 2.13 million available for reserves projects, going up to 4 million in fiscal year 23, 24. And this, this right here is a key number for fiscal year 23, 24. We're projecting that that outfall diffuser, we would go to construction at the earliest in 2023. $35 million project, that's not something that we have the cash to, to pay for. And so that's either going to have to be funded through an SRF loan through the state or through selling bonds. So if you were to take $35 million with the 30-year term at about 4% interest rate, you're at a $2 million debt service payment. So by, if we don't increase these rates, we're not going to be able to fund that outfall diffuser, plus have a little bit of money to build up our reserves and do the other projects. I mean, this is all-inclusive. This isn't, you know, just for a project. This is all-inclusive for the reserves and the projects. So I'm extremely concerned about wastewater. And I will note that, you know, I'm proposing these increases over the next three years. During that time, we will be bringing on a consultant to update our water and wastewater rate studies to not only evaluate rates, but also connection fees. And so that would be going on in the background. So how do we compare to, or here's a historical versus proposed wastewater rates. So again, going back to 2005, 2006, you saw increases. And there was a period of time where it was flat. In 2011, we adopted a rate study which increased the rates. The drought didn't impact the wastewater revenues. In 2016, again, adopted a new rate study. And then the last increase was July 1, 2018. It's been flat. And then we're proposing these increases over the next three years. So how do our rates compare? Wastewater's, wastewater is different. Right now, we're about middle of the pack. So this is Yuba City current in yellow. You have Chico down here at the low end, and you have Live Oak up here at the high end. Yuba City fiscal year 21, 22, still middle of the pack. Fiscal year 22, 23, further out. And then here's 23, 24, and the Prop 218. What this doesn't take into account is that a lot of agencies are also increasing their rates. And over the next three years, you'll also see an increase in rates. And so over time, I would expect that we would probably continue to be somewhat in the middle of the pack. So what does this mean for our customers? So for a bill comparison for a single-family dwelling with a one-inch water service that uses their base allocation of 15 HCF, for their fiscal year 21, 22, their bill would be 37.63. Sewer would be 57.20 for a total of $94.83. Their current bill is $88.80, so $6.03 more than what they pay today. For fiscal year 22, 23, it would be $12.48 more than what they pay today. And then for fiscal year 23, 24, $17.92 more than what they pay today. So that's significant when you're looking at the utility bill. However, when you're comparing it to like your cable bill or your cell phone bill, it's relative. And then similarly, bill comparison for commercial, a two-inch water service that has a C1 classification. So C1 represents the strength. So this is a fairly low-strength wastewater usage. So it might be an office or something like that. So their fiscal year 21, 22, their bill would increase $27.14. 22, 23, $56.18. And then 23, 24, $80.96. So next steps, I'll be bringing, be bringing this item before council again on June 1. The intent of that is to give opportunities for the public to hear that we're proposing to increase rates and either, you know, watch online or attend a council meeting and to be able to get more information related to the proposed rate increases. On June 15, the resolutions would come before council for adoption. And then the rates would become effective July 1 of 2021. So the rates will be reflected in bill that is mailed in late July and will apply to June consumption. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Langley? Seeing none, public comment? Anybody online?
No public comment.
Guess we'll see you on June 1. Thank you for your presentation, very thorough. I appreciate the comparisons especially. All right. Public communication on items on the agenda is the appearance of interested citizens. Members of the public may address the city council concerning any item that has been described in the notice of this meeting. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to say anything?
This one's for Diana again. Diana, the trunk line between Lassen and Franklin will developers help pay the cost of that when they go hook up for the subdivisions in the future? Will they help pay the cost of that trunk line that we're building?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the audience online?
No public comments.
Okay. All right, well, thanks staff for the work on the budget. Thank you for the presenters tonight. Thank you for the public that watched or paid or came in person. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.